Any chance you could drop this off or give us?
Yeah, of course.
We're gonna have a mandatory board tech session. Here at Village Hall.
Yeah.
Date to be determined prior to budget season.
If you don't mind and change it and we'll just get everything else.
I mean, I don't care. Nothing to...
No.
No way. I agree with something like that.
I'll just do it. I mean, we'll just do it.
Okay. Yeah, but I know. So I know I've been getting Dropbox on my phone.
You don't understand.
That's how I check everything.
Yeah, right. Well, as you know, it's so annoying because it's so little.
Yeah, you've gotta move it all around. That's a lot to read. It's a big document. Forget it.
Look, I'm still reading it. It takes me forever to read things. I know. I've been reading that for like a day or two now.
All right, thank you. Ten seconds.
My new password. Thank you. But what am I doing? Going ahead at the curve there, really? This had no problem.
Can you get into the topic?
Yeah, yeah. That had no problem.
All right, can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you and good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, January 23rd. It's about 7:40. We just came from executive session where we discussed appointments to intermunicipal airport master plan task force, which we approved last at our last meeting. All right, our first thing on the agenda, first item on the agenda is a public hearing. A public hearing on local law amending chapter 240, section 240-24 of the village code regarding the removal of illegally parked cars at Garibaldi and Ellendale parking lots. Yeah, so I think, yeah, so first, can I please have a motion and a second to open the public hearing?
Second. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes. Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. The public hearing is hereby opened. Do we have any of the members of, any members of the public who wish to speak?
Come on.
On this potential, on this potential...
This just allows us to remove, because these are permitted spaces, just allows us to re- give, we give warnings too, but we try to locate, but when it's repeated, we need to do something to be able to get that because, get them, the cars removed because, you know, people are paying for those spaces. There's currently eight locate parking spots on Ellendale and 18 on the Garibaldi parking lot.
Thank you, Chris. And I know we discussed this as we were setting the public hearing. It's something that, you know, we, we want to do, we're able to do, but we don't have signage and we don't have it in our codes. We need to make sure that this is in the code. So seeing no comments from the public, can I have a motion and second, please, to close the public hearing?
Motion. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes.
Yes, thank you. Let's move right into the resolution. Resolution number one, considering a proposed local law amending chapter 240 of the village code regarding the removal of illegally parked cars in the Garibaldi parking lot and the Ellendale parking lot.
Whereas the village of Rybrook owns a municipal parking lot in Garibaldi Place and an off-street parking area off Ellendale Avenue, whereby the village issues overnight parking permits to a limited number of parking spaces. And whereas the village is considering a local law amending chapter 240 regarding authorizing the removal of illegally parked cars in the Garibaldi lot and the Ellendale parking lot. And whereas a public hearing was held on January 23rd, allowing anyone interested to be heard in this matter, and the hearing was closed on the same day, may therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the proposed local law amending chapter 240 regarding the authorization of the removal of illegally parked cars in the Garibaldi parking lot and the Ellendale parking lot.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second, please?
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board?
My only comment is that I, I want to make sure that we give a final warning to those cars before we tow them. We're gonna put those signs on their cars, right? Okay. Got it.
Yeah. I know we try and avoid it as much as we possibly can, but if something's been parked there for days or weeks on end.
Absolutely.
Other questions, comments?
Nope. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number two, considering an intermuni- intermunicipal agreement between the village of Rybrook and the Portchester School District for a school resource officer.
Whereas the village of Rybrook and the Portchester School Board are both interested in establishing a resource, a school resource off-officer, otherwise known as an SRO. And whereas the, under the terms of the proposed municipal agreement, Rybrook would provide one police officer to rotate between Portchester High School and the Portchester Middle School on school days, and the Portchester School District would provide payment to the village for these SRO services. And whereas on January 18th, 2024, the Portchester School Board unanimously approved the intermunicipal agreement establishing the SRO program, may therefore be resolved that the Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the intermunicipal agreement between Rybrook and the Portchester School District establishing the SRO program at the Portchester High School and Portchester Middle School, subject to any modifications approved by council. Be it further resolved that the mayor, police chief, and administrator authorize to sign and execute any and all necessary documents to accomplish the purpose of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
So, I guess, a little bit, well, before we get a little background, but for those of, for those members of the public potentially wondering why the village of Rybrook is having a police officer serve as a school resource officer in the Portchester schools, it is because the Portchester High School and the Portchester Middle School both reside in the village of Rybrook. And so that's, that's why we are having our officer. And I want to thank Officer Lozala for volunteering for this, for this assignment. I think this is a way that we can really help out in those schools and really do some great community policing and, and having the kids get to know him and, and really, and spending time there. So, do you want to add background?
I'd just add a little bit more, sure. The, this is something that the chief, Chief Austin has been working as part of a committee with the Portchester School District, also the village of Portchesters, working on something similar in their community for the schools located in there, in the village of Portchester. But thanks to the chief, you know, he's able to work it out and work out an agreement. And there's been, you know, we've had several executive sessions on the topic. And what this is doing is, starting February 5th of this year, we'll be providing, we've, we will be providing the school resource officer in both, that would rotate between the middle school and the high school. That's going to be through the balance of this school fiscal year. Through the rest of the school year, they're going to be providing a fee at $140 an hour, which is the rate we currently receive for other types of contracted jobs. And then for the next school year, we're going to be working towards having another officer hired for the department, not assigned to do this work, because there's going to be the current officer we expect will continue. But the, that officer would, we have to come up with a new cost-sharing agreement for the next school year. Because the reason we need to do it now with the 140 is because we're backfilling Officer Lozala's position with overtime. So those expenses have to be, have to be recovered. But we will have to work on a new rate for the September school year, the next school year, and a cost-sharing agreement. But this puts it in place now, again, starting February 5th. And we're excited about the program. We're, you know, really looking forward to it. And I think it's a great opportunity for both the village and the school district. Greg, anything else you want to add?
So having the ability to do this is very exciting for me because when I came on the police department in 1988, the village was in, was forming a youth officer position. And the youth officer position was a third detective that would have responsibilities in all those schools, Blount Brook and, and Portchester, and would deal mainly with youth cases, you know, issues that deal with youth, be specifically trained. We had that position. As a position I held in 1996, I was a youth officer for two years. But, you know, it was always the goal to continue to move forward and to enhance the, the youth officer position. We did that with DARE in 1993. And our ultimate goal was to have a school resource officer in all the schools. Throughout the years, we've been talking with the Portchester High School principal about having one in the high school, and it never really got any traction until this year with Dr. Rodriguez. It's something that she wanted to do from her experiences in other school districts, as she felt that this was something that was beneficial. So this is what we're doing. And throughout the summer, we had meetings with parents. Surveys were done through parents to gauge their interest, and everyone, it was overwhelmingly supportive of this program. And something that we did in our committee meetings was, we developed a, a set of goals that, that will be what the youth officer is working, the, the school resource officer is working to accomplish. And there are 18 school districts in Westchester County that have school resource officers, and none of these school districts has written goals like, like we designed. So we feel that this program has structure, this, you know, it's, it's, there's goals in place to, to work toward and objectives to meet those goals and metrics to see if we, if we are achieving these goals. And I think that this is, is really going to be something that is beneficial and unique for, for Rybrook. And I think it's something that will really be an asset to the department and something that we really can be proud to have with this program. So, I'm very happy that we're going to be doing this.
And just to add, the, as mentioned in the resolution, this agreement was already approved by the Portchester School Board, so it was unanimous. And now with the, assuming the board adopts the same, we're ready to move forward now with the program. And you should mention the officer Lozala also went through extensive training a few months ago.
Yes, the summer, Officer Orelvis Lozala, he joined our department in 2020. He was previously with the New York State Park Police, he was assigned at Roberto Clemente State Park in New York City. He, he grew up on White Plains and graduated from White Plains High School and had firsthand experience with a White Plains police officer, school resource officer. And so, and he, and he credits the school resource officer for putting him on certain paths. He tells a story of how they, when he was getting ready to graduate high school, the school resource officer asked him, "What are you going to do?" He says, "I'm probably going to go to WCC." And he says, "No, you could go to a four-year school." And, you know, and that like encouraged him to do that. So he felt that, you know, that the school, the school resource officer in White Plains was a positive role model for him. And, and now this is something that he wants to be able to do because he had that experience in White Plains when he was in high school.
I think it's great. I think it's, it's definitely a well-worth program, for sure. I could definitely see it being an asset to the village of, of Portchester and to all those kids.
Yeah, and thank you for your hard work with this. You know, certainly, and we, we also thank the, the Portchester School District for being willing to take this on. And it's great that someone, you know, has, has the initiative to want to see this through. And, and that's certainly a, a great story from Officer Lozala.
There's a lot of parent buy-in on this. There were 25 parents and teachers and staff that were on this committee that came to the meeting. So there's, you know, there's a lot of buy-in from this in schools.
Interesting from the meeting when we first had, I remember going to the first meeting was a little not too sure. There was a little bit of a, hard to understand why.
Right.
But that's good. So those, all these little meetings you had really brought it all together. It's wonderful. It's great.
Yes, very much so.
Yeah, really helped bring it forward.
It's great.
Absolutely.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
My only comment is, before I vote, is that I appreciate your passion with regard to this and, and the officer's passion who's going to be there. So hopefully it will work out the way they want. And that everybody will, if it helps one person, then I guess it's worth it.
Thank you. We worked hard to make this successful.
Yeah, and, and we're sure that this will be successful. And we do understand that it's, you know, putting a little strain on the force, you know, just in, in terms of, we're already a little short-staffed and then having this. And that's why we're looking to really, you know, refill positions, get more positions onto the police force so that we can move forward with this position and still full staff. So we're, we're very much looking forward to be, be, being back up to full staff on the, on the force as well.
Greg, quick question. Will they be uniformed officers or, oh, okay, okay.
In armed. Any other questions, comments?
No. Trustee Epstein? Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morino? Yes.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number three, considering a hold harmless agreement between the village of Rybrook and Dan Zoo to maintain existing structures in a village drainage easement.
Whereas the village of Rybrook has an existing drainage easement at Five Deer Run, and whereas the existing drainage easement at Five Deer Run is existing structures, including an outdoor barbecue kitchen, deck steps, a koi pond, retaining wall, chain link fence, and stockade fence. And whereas the owner of Five Deer Run wishes to maintain the existing structures in the drainage dis- district, sorry, drainage easement. And whereas the village of Rybrook wishes to enter into a hold harmless agreement with Dan Zoo to allow the existing structures to remain in the drainage easement while holding harmless and indemnifying the village, its officers, agents, contractors, and employees from and against all claims and liability for loss or damage on the premise or any injury or to death or to, or death of any kind or persons that may be occasioned by the location. May therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hold harmless agreement with Dan Zoo of Five Deer Run to hold harmless and indemnify the village and all the people mentioned before and all the persons that may be occasioned by location, subject to modification by council. Be it further resolved that the mayor and administrator authorize to execute, execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Now, dude, I know we had had this on our previous agenda. Did we already have a motion and second on it?
You withdrew it.
We withdrew it, okay. So can, so can I get a motion and second, please?
Move second.
Okay. So I know there is conversation for this. I believe we have someone representing or at least a member of the public or...
Yep, Dan Tartaglia is here.
So Mr. Tartaglia, if you'd like to...
Representing the property owner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Dan Tartaglia, 800 Westchester Avenue, Rybrook, New York. I'm appearing this evening on behalf of the property owner of the zoos, but they're not my clients. I'm representing actually the prior owner, the Pacchellis. This was all talked about, agreed to, considered when the transaction occurred. So this came to light before this transaction occurred, before the Pacchellis sold it to the zoo. In fact, there's, there's an escrow agreement where there's still money being held back for Pacchellis to legitimize and, and, and get whatever permits and variances and approvals are, are required. So that, that's kind of my role. I watched the meeting the other night and I saw, and it was Trustee Heiser, who is not here this evening, but some of you said you had questions. And so I figured I'd come tonight if you want to ask me anything about this or if there's anything I can offer to try to clarify what it is you're being asked to do.
Yeah, and I think there were a number of questions from the board. I think most of them stem from, you know...
What happened?
Yeah, well, first of all, how did, how did, how this guy ended up getting built on the easement? But then also, you know, why this didn't come up in title search? Or I guess maybe it did if there is a, if something's being held in escrow that when the survey was done, you know, we were just very concerned that a new owner had taken over this property without anything having been... without anything having been legalized prior to the sale.
It's highly unusual.
No, not really. So Dan, typically, sometimes I've seen it happen where someone buys a, wants a piece of property, really wants a piece of property, and they say, okay, these things need to be resolved, so we're going to figure out a number. We're going to hold money in escrow, which I assume that your client did do.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand dollars in escrow. Uh, in turn, uh, the new buyer, the, the old buyer, I guess, had to get it resolved. Or that money was good to get it resolved, whether it was permits, take it down, or what have you. Um, and probably the title search company knew about it, signed off, not signed off on it, but said, hey, we're not going to be responsible for this. We're going to take this off our title search.
Well, no, there's, there was one thing I did want to correct that was discussed at your last meeting. This subdivision was, it's old by Rybrook standards. It's nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven. The village was just forming at the time. We were still using the regulations from the town of Ry.
Eighty-two.
Now, there's a, when you, when you have easements, you can have a written easement, you can have a grant of easement, an easement agreement, or you can just have a subdivision plat. And you can show the easement on the subdivision plat, and that's exactly what this did. Here's a little corner that I blew up. So this is the original subdivision plat. You see clearly here, the easement. I mean, nobody's missing it. But on the notes, it says, all it says about it is, "The village of Rybrook shall have permanent easement along lots five, six, and nine for drainage and sewer line maintenance." That's all it says. So there's no prohibition in a written easement agreement from putting structures here. So as long as you're not interfering with the easement, you can, you can put whatever you want there. And in fact, most people don't realize that where the road ends is not where the right-of-way ends. The road is what's improved. The right-of-way continues. And, and when people at the end of their yard put in plants, put in stolen walls, you know, they're actually planting those things in a, in a right-of-way. So if the road ever gets expanded or if it has to get removed, that's what will happen. It'll have to get removed. So, so really, when all of this came up, it was the building department's idea with, with the village attorney to do the hold harmless agreement because it really protects the village. It adds additional protections for the village. So it's not, it, Pacchellis didn't, they, they need setback variances. There's no question about it. But nothing they did in the easement area violates the easement. Am I making sense?
Yeah, yeah.
So, and, you know, having served on this board for now eleven, almost eleven years, we've seen this before where something's been built in a right-of-way, but it's typically been part of a fence, a couple of plants. This definitely is larger than anything we've seen. I think I'm glad to hear that explanation.
But if this were, if this were a swale, Mr. Mayor, completely different story. This is an underground culvert. And as long as what's on top of it isn't interfering with the culvert, it's not a violation. If it was a swale and there were improvements in the swale, yeah, then it's blocking.
I don't, I just don't want to give the impression that anyone with an easement can put things in their, in their easement areas. Because, because that's not the case. Each situation can be different depending on when it was done and what the language in the easement says. So I just want to be really clear. Yeah, because in other cases, it's, it's very clear what can and can't be put in an easement area. That said, what this is doing is we're putting in, if the board approves that you're putting in a license agreement which protects the village, that does not, what you're not doing is approving the things that need permits or a variance. The applicant will still have to go and receive whatever permits are necessary and whatever variances are necessary.
And when we met with the building department, they were clear that they weren't going, we don't have to go to the planning board. Um, I think one of the questions trustee Heiser asked was about impervious surface. There is an impervious surface variance they'll be requesting. We do have to get variances, so we do have to go to the zoning board. When I met with the building department, you know, we need a declination letter in order to apply, and he indicated that he, he wasn't going to issue the declination letter until this was signed. So we're kind of in, in limbo also.
Are there setback requirements there too as well?
Yes, there are. I don't have them exact because I don't have a, I don't have a survey that I can scale off of. But the building department indicated to us that, I did make a couple of calculations.
Is the survey available online?
Yeah, there's several variances it needs. One is for impervious surface. One is there's a shed. Other side, not an easement area. That's, that needs a side yard.
Yeah, five feet from the property line.
Right, that needs a couple of foot variance.
Mm-hmm. So this is-
Barbecue slash outdoor kitchen. Oh, here it is. Okay, so the impervious surface is permitted is fifty-five hundred square feet. The actual is seventy-one hundred square feet, so there's sixteen hundred forty-nine square feet.
Oh, wow.
A variance for that. The outdoor kitchen, um, needs a six-foot setback. It's going to need a variance of about four point three feet. The shed and the sport court, um, which is on the other side of the property also.
Lot of stuff. Lot, lot, lot of stuff. How do you, do you feel that the zoning board's going to approve all that and the neighbors and it seems like a lot of?
It's been there probably for five years.
Well, it's not that long, but okay.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, the bigger question also is how is this all built without permits?
Remember, it was nineteen, you know, the swimming pool was built in nineteen eighty-eight. This man, they've owned the property since nineteen eighty-seven. So things were installed, the law's changed. The impervious surface, Michael, when did that even come into the code? It didn't come in in nineteen eighty-seven, I can guarantee you, because I, I went back and looked at the old Rytown code, and there was not an impervious surface coverage requirement, maximum requirement. So, uh, you know, some of the stuff may have been done. I, I don't know historically how everything was done, but I know a lot of the stuff has been there for a long time. And if they say no, the escrow agreement says we have to remove it.
Right. And if we did agree on this, uh, we can also put a clause in there if the, it's not, void if?
Well, no, if, if they're turned down by the, for their permits or the variance, then they have to remove the structure. They have to remove it from the, from that area.
But they may give you a variance. They may give you some agreement on other, one thing and not the other.
Yeah, and remember, some of it is in the easement area and some of the other items are not in the easement area. So in any of those cases, if it's allowed, then it can stay, and if it's not allowed, then it gets removed.
Could you tell me what is actually in the easement area? What is in the easement area itself? Is there any specific structure or?
The, the, the so-called outdoor kitchen.
Oh.
The koi pond, um, and I think some fencing.
Steps maybe or some of the steps.
The edge of some steps coming down from the deck, I think.
Wow, lot of stuff. There's a lot of stuff.
I didn't, I didn't think it was that much.
Well, it's a huge impervious surface variance.
Yeah.
That nobody would get today.
I don't know about that. Well, but, but that's not, and I would say, and, and what I would say, what I would say also is that on the variances, on the setbacks, on all of that, that's typically not something that this board would be weighing in on.
Right, exactly.
That, that, that essentially what we'd be doing if we approve the hold harmless agreement is we would be referring this to the other boards.
You don't even have to refer.
No, but I mean, essentially, that's, that's what the process.
They have to go there next.
Essentially is, is that they still need to appear before these other boards to either get approved or denied on the variances or to take remedial actions on anything that was built, possibly being, you know, deconstructed or possibly adding in, um, stormwater device. It could be. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of remedies that could potentially happen. But that's not something that we would typically be, be deciding on for a single property.
That's correct. That's actually, yeah, not before you tonight either, yeah.
Right, and that's not before us. Really, all that's before us right now is the whole hold harmless agreement.
Right, and, and, and in paragraph five of the hold harmless agreement, you'll see that there's an additional requirement now that the owner not add anything else within the easement area. So what's there is there.
Add anything else you can.
I was going to say, I don't think there's room to add anything else.
I don't think you could add an umbrella. So what's the next step? Kidding.
Well, it would be, then it would be whether we approve or disapprove.
I wish David were here, because I know that he would have questions.
Yeah. So any other questions?
The thing is, they're going to see that we're approving the whole harmless agreement and therefore what will those boards do? So I want to, I just want to think about the chain of events if we do it that way.
No, all we're doing is, sorry.
That's okay. So the whole harmless agreement is just offering some protections to the village. It's not saying whether or not any of the stuff that was put up without our permit is going to get the permits or get the variances that it needs. If it's not legalized, then it'll have to be removed. If it's legalized, it's also giving you protections that, one, like he pointed out, that they can't build any other structures in the easement area. And two, that if, in the future, you need to do, you need access to the drainage system and you need to move something that they've constructed in that easement area, that, that you can move it at their expense. I mean, there's provisions that you're going to give them notice and give them an opportunity to move it first. But if you need to move it, you're going to be reimbursed. So this is just providing a layer of protection for the village for the fact that something was built in the easement area. It's not saying, you're not condoning anything that happened by entering, approving this agreement.
Okay, so it's protecting us.
Right, in no way are we opining on whether or not we think that the easement, or that the variances should be granted or whether or not that we think any action should be taken by any board. We are simply looking at the hold harmless agreement.
Okay.
Right, and the, and council for the village did also add a provision that says, "In the event any of the structures are removed, the structure, um, the easement area will be restored." So if we don't get a variance and something has to be removed, there's always, already a provision in here that says that will have to be put back in its original condition, that area.
So if it does have to be removed, the provision in here says it has to go, it can go back in the same position it was in?
No, it has to be restored.
Restore it.
Restore the easement.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so for example-
Not restore the structure.
Make it a grass area, basically.
Basically, fill it in and put grass in and, and restore the easement.
No, and I think, and I think part of the confusion, the first time this came before us, at the last meeting, was a lot of this wasn't clear about an escrow account, about whether this had come up during the transaction. A lot of this was just, okay, so a former owner had, had on their property done all this work outside of current code. We don't know when this was done. We don't know whether there was, there was any knowledge by the new owner that this had been done outside, you know, non-conforming, whether it's, you know, um, you know, you know.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
Pre-existing, thank you, the pre-existing non-conforming. So this is, this, I think adds a lot of clarity to, to the issue.
Yeah, and we also, which is in the backup to the agenda, we also received a memorandum from Kenan Bean about some of the backup that helped.
Right.
Since the last meeting.
This wasn't the property owner's idea, and this wasn't my client's idea. This was the village's idea. And the building department has said to us, he will not issue the declination letter until this is either voted, either approved and signed or voted down. So that's just part of the process.
Right, and so this allows us to then get the hold harmless agreement in place, allow the declination to occur, and that's when it gets kicked to the other boards who can take action on it the way they would with any other property in this village.
Right. Do we vote?
Well.
You can make a motion to approve.
So, so wait, do we have, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion in second on this? I think we did before we started the conversation.
Yeah.
Correct? Okay.
You did.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
No, no. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. All right.
Trustee Epstein.
Yes.
Trustee Fisher.
Yes.
Trustee Morlino. Yes, and Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Tartaglia, for coming tonight. All right.
Look.
Moving on, resolution number four, considering a service agreement with LightPath for internet service for two license plate readers.
Whereas the county of Westchester and Cablevision LightPath enter into a First Amendment to Agreement. Basically, the whole first paragraph of this resolution says we have an existing agreement with LightPath and services are, and pricing is included in that agreement and, uh, including, you know, a price schedule that we could work off. But whereas the village of Rybrook, as an interested participant, seeks to obtain certain communication services from Cablevision LightPath pursuant to that service order that's previously approved, uh, that's, sorry, that's provided for this work and is governed by the agreement that was previously approved for the purpose of providing high-speed internet service for two license plate readers in the total monthly amount of eight hundred eighty-six dollars. Now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves service order as governed by and subject to the master agreement for the purpose of providing high-speed internet service to two license plate readers in the total monthly amount of eight hundred eighty-six dollars. And be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator are authorized to sign and execute any documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please? I fully expect the same amount of conversation on this resolution.
Absolutely. So do we know where these are going to be?
That's for the chief to, to raise.
These are new. These are not replacements?
No, these are the license plate readers that-
This is the service-
The ones that were budgeted.
The ones that were budgeted, they're, they're installed. There's, uh, Westchester Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, and Ridge Street and High Street. And what we found when they were installed, they were supposed to be originally, um, able to connect by, um, broadband wireless through the internet, but the signal's not strong enough because not only do these readers take reads of the, um, of the license plates, but it's also video, and there's not enough bandwidth to transmit the video. And that's why we need a dedicated phone line, you know, hardwired line in.
Wow.
There's one there now, isn't there?
Yeah, they're there. They're, they're installed. They're, they're installed.
No, no, there's one right, right across from the cemetery right there, right?
That's the, that's, that's one of them.
Oh, that's one of them.
Right, there's one here, Ridge and King Street.
Yeah, I've seen that one.
That belongs to Westchester County.
That's not ours, right?
And then we've had one at Westchester Avenue, Lincoln Avenue.
So those aren't working yet?
No, they're working, but they, but they're only working partially because they're getting the, we're able to get the license plate reads.
Yeah, right.
But we can't get the video.
Oh, okay. All right, so.
So the, what you're doing tonight is that we have a master agreement with LightPath with pricing. So we have a, a service order that was given us to give, with that pricing on it, and that's what we're asking the board to consider so that we can have the high-speed internet.
Will that help, will that also trigger if we wanted to get more cameras? Would that be a, or you have to spend more money?
Dedicated to that reader, right?
It's just to those cameras.
Those readers, okay.
It's just those readers, but we, you know, we have the three cameras here. Portchester has cameras on King Street coming through the village. Harrison has, has cameras on, um, on, uh, Lincoln Avenue and on Anderson. We're all coming through the village. So we're pretty-
Pretty covered, huh?
We're pretty covered, yeah, coming in to the village.
Around. Yeah, that's good. Have they been successful?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Good.
Are they identifying the trucks yet?
It's, it's, yeah, it'd be interesting if we ever could get a video of that.
Yes. I see those trucks on the highway all the time.
I know.
Well, that's what's scary is, is to see from the county how many trucks have actually go on it and get off from the warning signs. You know, that's what's incredible. But it's incredible to see how many actually that is.
Get on.
How many, how many truck drivers are just plugging in an address to a phone, in a phone?
And, and the entrance ramps that all have those signs too.
They're just ignoring.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes they start and it's too late. They can't-
So no, this will not help us avoid the trucks.
I got you. The net-net is.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
Thank you. No. How soon is this going to happen?
As soon as it's decided, I will set up the isolation date.
Great. Great.
Trustee Epstein.
Great, yes.
Trustee Fisher.
Yes.
Trustee Heiser. Trustee Morlino. Mayor Klein.
Is that a test?
I didn't vote.
Mayor.
Mayor Klein.
And we were going to be waiting for a while for David to, to say yes. All right, thank you. Resolution number five, considering appointments to the intermunicipal airport, master plan task- Resolution number five, considering appointments to the intermunicipal airport master plan task force.
Whereas on January ninth, two thousand twenty-four, the Board of Trustees established an intermunicipal airport master plan task force. To serve for limited duration and the purpose to review the master plan supplement and seek and draft a position paper. To be endorsed by the various municipal boards to present at the county. Uh, as part of the public community engagement program and the master plan supplement. And two, advise on any issues or concerns regarding the expiration and renewal of the terminal use agreement. And whereas the mayor and administrator reached out to municipal officials in Portchester, Rye City, North Castle, Rye Town. Harrison and Greenwich inviting them to appoint one or two members of their communities to serve on the task force. And whereas the village of Rybrook also has to appoint two members to serve in the task force. Now therefore be resolved that the village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves Peter Schlaaktis and John Mugno of the uh, to serve. As Rybrook's representatives as members of the intermunicipal airport master plan task force.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please?
No, moved, second.
We were, I I think, well, at our last meeting, we uh, voted to create this task force. And we have gotten responses from some of the municipalities that we've reached out to. About who they would like to appoint, and we thank the other municipalities for uh, sending some representatives. To help us with this, certainly having a combined voice. Um, is a better way because we know that what happens at the airport affects all of these communities and others. And so, um, you know, the more that we can get together and at least have a comment. We know that the county is going through the master uh, master plan uh, process. And to be able to comment on that um, is in the best interest of all these communities. Um, you know, clearly this doesn't set aside our own airport advisory committee. And those who serve on the county's airport advisory committee, uh, those will still remain. This is a limited duration task force just for looking at the master plan itself.
And the two members that the board are considering are both are Rybrook Airport Advisory Committee members.
Correct, and and we thank uh, both Peter and John for their service on the airport advisory committee. But also for this as well, and I will certainly try to get to as many of these meetings as I possibly can.
So can I ask one other question as well? So that we've sent it to Rye City, Portchester, North Castle, Harrison and Greenwich and the town of Rye. Um, the question.
Peter had suggested.
Had suggested we do a further reach out, outreach to White Plains, Mount Pleasant and Newcastle. Um, and I just wanna see if that's something the board wants it that bigger or doesn't want it bigger or feels that what's there is appropriate. So I'm just trying to gauge that before I reach out.
I'm fine with reaching out to more, I think this is, this affects residents of those municipalities as well.
Okay, I'll send that out.
Great. And then, of course, we'll have to, you know, get the task force together once we have.
One be another, sorry.
And we we gave again artificial deadline for that, just to get it moving, so hopefully it'll be close to that date.
You're not supposed to say that out loud.
It's, they all know, because they've all asked.
I know.
If we need another week or two, is that all right? It's like, it's fine.
So, yeah, we will, and then start to convene the task force. Any questions or comments?
Nope.
Again, we thank Peter and John for their service, both already and to come.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes, thank you, both Peter and John.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino? Yes, and Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the minutes for the meeting held on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Resolution number seven.
Uh, seven is an add-on resolution, and uh, it has to do with electric vehicles, setting up an account for that, so. Consider, so if the board's okay with going forward with this resolution?
All right, resolution number seven, considering establishing a capital project and funding for the village hall. And Garibaldi Place EV charge, charging stations project.
Whereas the Board of Trustees approved proposals with INF Associates on January ninth. Provide four dual-part electric vehicle charging stations, eight ports total, at the village hall parking lot. And two dual-port part charging stations, eight, four ports total, at the Garibaldi Place municipal lot. And whereas, in accordance with the proposals, the cost of the planning, design and installation of these charging, charging stations. Are estimated to be a hundred and eight thousand seven seventy-three, which is anticipated to be reimbursed in full through various incentives and rebates. And whereas a capital project account and funding needs to be provided to properly track these expenses for reimbursement. Now therefore be resolved that the following capital fund project be established for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And uh, there's an account set up with the title of EV charging stations installation for the current fiscal year. And be it further resolved that the capital project is um, funded by a transfer from the general fund designated for capital projects. Fund balance account to the EV installation, village hall and Garibaldi Place capital project. And the budgets are amended as follows, and there's basically a transfer um, basically from the uh, cap, that designated for capital fund account. To a specific project in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in second, please?
Second.
And I think one of the uh, biggest or the most important words in here are reimbursed in full.
So when this is completely done and everything is reimbursed, then we'll have another transfer back to the designated for capital projects.
Right, and something tells me at some point, we're also going to have a resolution in here for the amount of probably, what is that? One thousand uh, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars uh, to close out a capital project.
Yes.
At some point, because it's a hundred and eight thousand seven seventy-three.
In case it was any little.
It's a hundred and ten thousand, so I have a feeling at some point I'll see a resolution.
And it is, and the and the proposal was an estimate, so I just wanna give yourself a little bit of flexibility.
Right, that makes sense.
What is the timing?
Remember, it's moving a large number of municipalities, so it's not really all up to us. So it could be as early as this year or as late as next summer, I'm told.
Wow.
Yep. Remember, they're dealing with all the municipalities in the county on this one to to work.
No, but they can physically do everyone at the same time, so I guess.
That's why.
That's why there's a large window.
Yeah, and so and actually, we just.
How do we move ourselves?
We just restructured both proposals so that we can move forward in an earlier queue. Um, by by the last proposal, you had same amounts. But basically was for software purchase, you can't purchase software and equipment without the physically being here. So we flip-flop that with the design installation, so they're gonna start working on that. So we'll get earlier in the queue by starting the project earlier, so we flip-flop the two.
Okay, great.
More detailed than you probably care, but.
That's why I said, how do we um, expedite?
And then they do, and then they'll do that through progress payments based on how much work they've done.
Okay, awesome.
So it's a reimbursement as a.
So you'll be able to, well, no, it's not like the other program, it's probably gonna be a reimbursement more. At, there's two different, there's a couple of different programs, so it'll be at each stage, that they finish each stage.
Okay.
So you're only putting out whatever you put out?
You're gonna be putting out large chunks of that for this program, unlike the NRCS, which we get reimbursed right away.
Right, right. Alright.
But that's why we have to establish it, because you gotta pay it out first and then get reimbursed.
Right. Great, make sure you do it.
We do.
We will make sure of that.
And also by doing it, it's a capital, it allows you to go from one um, fiscal year to the next fiscal year.
That's good.
Right. Which, just in case it takes that long, right?
Well, it'll be fiscal years, it definitely won't be done by this May.
No. No, which is when our fiscal year ends.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
No. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino? Yes, Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Administrator's report.
Okay, just have a few items. One, um, the NRCS property uh, buyout program is going well. Uh, we have fifteen of twenty-two appraisals have now been sent to the homeowners. So we expect the rest to be done over the next week or so, and um, they've been, those are the ones that have been approved by the NRCS. And three have already sent in quick replies saying yes, that they want to continue, which is great, and nobody has said no so far. So um, that's all good news. The next step in that project is, once all the appraisals are out, we'll have a meeting with the nature conservancy with all the residents that are considering it. And to get more information um, about that program and how it will work, so that'll be a Zoom meeting. Um, which they they know. So after that, um, then we start working more on towards closings and environmental reviews and all the other stuff we have to do. Uh, once we know how many people are actually participating. So I think we're gonna get a good number of people participating here out of the twenty-two. Um, just mentioned, there's a, you know, we've we've discovered a blockage on Country Ridge Drive. Close to Rocking Horse Trail, near the golf course, towards the golf course. It's about fifty feet in from Country Ridge Drive, so next week will be, there'll be workout and we'll let the residents know right in that area. But there'll be a lot of trucks and and um, activity next Tuesday. It's currently, it's tentatively scheduled for, weather permitting, weather needs to cooperate. And uh, so we, again, be some notifications, but you'll see a lot of activity over there for the day.
So you've informed all of the neighbors in that area? No, they have no idea that you found?
Not yet.
Oh.
They know, several of the ones that have been impacted have been emailing, asking questions about, you know, what's the solution, if you find the solutions, that kind of thing. But we're gonna be letting them know about the work, what it is and what the work is, and that there'll be activity next week to get it done.
Okay.
Can't do it this week, the weather's just not cooperating, cooperative. Um, let's see, we mentioned the school resource officer program, so again, thanks to Chief Austin for all the hard work. That was a long road that he went through to to work to this place, but it's nice when it all comes together and, you know, a success, so great job. And the Viola, I just wanna mention, Violia water rate case for the public, there is a notice of a joint proposal. Uh, that is public now, and uh, that's for, it's also a point that joint proposal, they're soliciting public comment on that. It's a four-year resolution from February first of this year through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven. Uh, the levelized increase uh, is basically five point nine percent per year. Uh, comments are requested to the Public Service Commission by March first of this year. And it's a joint proposal, uh, Violia Public Service Commission Trial Staff, Rye City, Rybrook, Portchester. And and some other agencies, and there will be still a separation, under proposal, there's a separation of rates. Between our area, our area being Rye City, Portchester and Rybrook, and the New Rochelle rates. That's more advantageous to um, to our district. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, any other comments from the public? Michael, I feel bad you've been here and haven't said anything. Any other questions or comments from the board?
No.
All right, the next meetings of the Board of Trustees are February thirteenth and February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Thank you and good night.
Night.